The role.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fith.
Here.
Alderman Brathwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alrighty.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October 27th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is mayor's public announcements and proclamations. I am happy to announce that trick or treating is from 4:00 to 7:00 on Friday. So everyone have a wonderful time and be safe. And city manager, do you have public announcements?
I do, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. We're having an event on October 30th, this coming Thursday, to help with our bike safety efforts. Cindy Plant, our ICMA fellow is here to provide a report. Cindy, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Cindy Plant, ICMA fellow. And I've been working for the past two weeks on our Pedal Bright Bike Safety Event and Bike Lake Distribution, which will be going on this Thursday afternoon from 4:30 to 6:30 at Robert Crown Center and at Northwestern University on campus underneath the Weber Arch near Chicago Avenue and Sheridan Road. As part of the event, we will be distributing safety information. We have everyday bicycling from the Active Transportation Alliance that they've provided, as well as the Illinois Bicycle Rules of the Road from the Secretary of State's office. 311 and the Evanston Police Department will be on hand to help people register their bikes to prevent bike theft in Evanston. And we will also be handing out these super awesome LED taillights. And we have some headlights that have been ordered as well from Wheel &amp; Sprocket. We've also gotten sponsorships from several other community partners, including ETHS, Royce Moore School, Wheel &amp; Sprocket, Active Transportation Alliance. We keep adding more. It's great. The reception has been excellent so far. I'm hearing a lot of great feedback in the community and people are really excited about the event. So come out, bring your bike, get a light, learn about bike safety.
Cindy, question. Who's paying for all this?
So we have... We've gotten funding from all these great sponsors that I just mentioned. Evanston Bicycle Club providing us with some of the funding, as well as volunteers. Wheel &amp; Sprocket gave us the lights at a deep discount, I'm told below cost, that we are then paying for with all of this money that we've raised from these community organizations and businesses. So we are not using city money.
So this is truly a community-city partnership?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well Cindy, you might be the appropriate person for me to give this to. I have a letter saying, "Dear Mayor Tisdall, On my recent trip to Germany, I learned that all children between the ages of nine and 10 are required by law to take a training course to obtain a license to ride their bike on city streets. In view of the increase of bike riders on Evanston streets, and I am sure the children's safety is of great concern to you, I thought the enclosed video might present some food for thought. Very truly yours, Bern J. Rucktuschel." I'm sorry, I massacred his last name, but here's an excellent video of ways to teach children bike safety.
Alright, I'll definitely review that and I will trade you for a bike light.
I got a bike light. If you get a headlight, let me know.
I'm getting them tomorrow.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my reports, Madam Mayor.
City Clerk, do you have communications?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Then we'll go to public comment and I am going to reserve the right to break into it at some point for a proclamation that I'm going to read when the recipients of the proclamation show up. First four speakers are Laura Beth Nielsen, Annette Rozier, Jason Spencer, and Peggy Tar.
Thank you for allotting me some time. My name is Laura Beth Nielsen. Two years ago, I came to the city council to talk about the fact that there is not a legal place to skateboard in Evanston. And we, an ad hoc committee was formed to look into a skate park, which was a partnership, or which consisted of Evanston Parks and Rec guys and Ridgeville Park District and a senior at ETHS High School as his senior studies service project, and me as a member of the community. The committee met a number of times and very usefully, we obtained some designs, some possible designs, and we looked at best practices for skate parks and so on. In the last week or so, it's become clear that Ridgeville is probably, at least in its current composition, unlikely to donate the land, which is fine. And so we met and sort of decided that that ad hoc committee should probably stop meeting, which is perfectly okay with me because I'm not into meetings that go nowhere. But there are still a number of skateboarding issues that I think the Evanston City Council should address. And it remains illegal to skate in most parts of Evanston. I offered, and Mayor Tisdall said she would be willing to look at some ordinance drafting. I've contacted a lawyer who does this for best practices. But I feel like we need to thoughtfully move forward towards best practices for this sport in Evanston. And so I've prepared this handout to begin talking about skateboarding in a constructive way. And at some point, I'll bring lots of skateboarders with me, but I think that's a little premature. And I just briefly want to pause and apologize if anything I have said personally or done that implies that I think that a skate park should be part of Penny Park or part of the Robert Crown revamp. I understand that this would be a whole new project. And I want, I made some comparisons and that was probably unhelpful. And so I want to apologize and understand that we are starting from scratch and that this will probably happen for my grandchildren's, grandchildren's. I just said that word. So I've handed out this flyer and I just want to give you some facts. National estimates are that there are about 14 million skateboarders in the United States. At the national average rate, that means we have about 4,000 skateboarders. We're not at the national average rate. We're a college town. We're an active town. We're a highly educated town. All of those make for more skateboarders. The number of skateboarders has increased 60% between 1999 and 2002 in the United States. 15% of teenagers aged 12 to 17 skateboard once in a while. And for 8%, it's their primary sport. So 8% of teenagers, 12 to 17, this is their primary sport. My sons are among them. I also skate. I can even skate in stack heels. Informal, non-tracked, non-competitive sports like skateboarding have been shown, and all of these claims are backed up with mostly peer-reviewed social science data. Informal, non-tracked sports like skateboarding promote racially diverse relationships in diverse communities where friendships can be very segregated. And that has certainly been the experience of my own children. There are over 5,000 skate parks in the United States. Many can be and many are built and maintained LEED-certified with Gardens Landscaping and Incorporating the National...
Laura, I need you to wrap up. I'm sorry, I did tell you earlier that three minutes per speaker.
Right, I'm happy to stick to three minutes. Has it been over three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, just have to let me know. Okay, well, I'll be back at the next meeting with Von.
You'll be welcome.
Are there any questions?
No. Annette?
Good evening. So my name is Annette Brayden Rozier. I reside at 821 Malford. And I used to be a resident on 907 Sherman. And you might remember, I was here before and I wish I could speak on something more pleasant, but it's this ongoing issue of the noise on that street coming from Revolution Spin. I have since then moved away, partially because of the noise level of this neighborhood. And some of the noise can't be, clearly is inevitable. But the one that is particularly annoying, which has been coming from Revolution X, that could be helped. And it's very nice to live in a quiet neighborhood. I can tell you that right now. And most of you, I bet, do live in a quiet neighborhood. I enjoy that every day. And who wants to wake up on Sunday morning to boot camp shouting? This time, we come because we have a petition. I don't enjoy being here. And I bet that many people who would, who have been bothered by the same thing, don't speak up because they have more important things to do. They are busy with their lives. They don't enjoy speaking up. And it takes time out of people's busy lives. It's easier to put up with annoyances than actually doing something about it. And it takes courage to take action. And some of us are simply afraid. And Peggy Tar has been somebody who has been persistently speaking out and was blamed of being the only one being bothered by it, which is simply not true. Peggy has been nothing but a kind and watchful neighbor to all of us in the building. And she's the kind of neighbor you want. And these signatures, 55, 54 signatures, show that she is not the only one. And I wasn't the only one. And Jason isn't the only one. These are signatures by people who are either residents or patrons of the stores, or people who just walk by and wonder what's going on, or people who work in the neighboring businesses. I read the petition. Do I have the time?
Yes, if you read quickly.
City of Evanston, we the undersigned petition, the city of Evanston, to enforce City of Evanston Motive Code 9520 and require Revolution X owner Jason Bressler or CAS management take immediate measures to soundproof Revolution X to prevent the emission of noise from Revolution X that annoys, disturbs, and endangers the health of residents and deprives residents of peace and quiet. And the resolution, the code is, "It shall be unlawful for any person within the city to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, convenience, health, peace, or safety of others within the limits of the city."
Okay, now you're out of time. Perfect timing. Thank you very much. Jason Spencer?
It's too loud where I live. It's 907 Sherman. I can't even leave my window open for my cat. My cat goes really bonkers and he tries to bite me. He doesn't like that noise. And one day I was at Main Foods, Main and Elm, and I could hear it from all the way down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm here again. And fortunately for you, I have a throat, so I can't talk very much. But I did want to say that some of the people did not want to sign the petition for fear, and one place, for fear of being told they'd have to move. And I had one message that I wanted to play for you because the person lives in the apartment building that houses Revolution X. And he evidently was afraid to leave his name. And you'll have to excuse my tape.
Hi, I'm calling in regard to petition, request that's on my door in regard to spin nation, this cycling exercise thing that they do. It's a building that I appreciate I live in. And it's way over the top. They use a microphone and shout out at the top of their lungs. It's winter right now and you still can hear them with all the windows shut. In the summertime, it's totally outrageous for residential area. The place needs to either get the microphone turned down and out or move it to a non-residential area. I, I, I'm agreeing with the petition. Thank you very much. Bye.
Now we said soundproof, but what we're asking is for something to be done. Alderman Wilson said that he suggested to them that they use some kind of material that would help block out the sound. There's no reason why we have to hear this noise. People in the 800 block of Sherman can hear it. People on Main Street can hear it. A couple came around one night from Main Street to see where the noise was coming from. We've asked nicely, and I've asked not so nicely because I've had to write letters, to please do something about it. There's no reason why we should have to suffer.
Thank you. Alan Price? Alright, I think he left. Alright, we have representatives from Mount Zion and Second Baptist here. So I am going to read the proclamation. Evanston Own It Day, November 1st, 2014. Whereas it is the responsibility of each Evanston resident to claim ownership of their home, their block, and their community. And whereas all people deserve to live in a safe and caring community. And whereas all adults and children in Evanston should feel that all of Evanston belongs to them and they own it. And whereas the faith-based community recognizes and owns their call to stand in full partnership and service to the Evanston community and is committed to furthering the understanding that what happens to one in Evanston happens to all. And whereas the faith-based community offers support and pledge to work and fellowship with all residents to achieve an own-it spirit. And whereas, over the next year, the faith-based community will promote a series of activities and events that will encourage all residents to own Evanston. And whereas the first such event will be held on Saturday, November 1st, 2014, to encourage all Evanston residents to vote early on that day. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 1st, 2014, as Evanston Own It Day. This marks the beginning of Evanston Own It in the City of Evanston. Here you go. What? Did you, you want to speak? Alright, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I came, I came early and then I left and came back and you would already be gone.
Go right ahead and speak.
My name is Priscilla.
Could I say one thing first though, before you get started? If you could vote November 1st, that's wonderful. However, if you can't vote November 1st, just vote, please. City Clerk's office is open. Would you like to tell them when?
8:30 to 5:00. The city clerk's office is open, but voting will be until November 3rd in this building on the second floor, room 2200. And then on the polling days, on November 4th, on Tuesday, you go to your polling location and place your vote from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Okay, my name is Priscilla Giles and I am speaking to the bike, Mason Park Bike Improvement. And I'm speaking because a decision is to be made and the community has not had a chance to even talk about it. I think that there was a street. It could be done. And maybe the community might be in favor of it. I live about two blocks from there. I had no idea where the bike path would be. And I think that I'm not the only one and I think that the community should have a meeting before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That does, I believe, conclude citizen comment. Next is special orders of business. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We were with you a few weeks ago talking about bike issues. There was one that we did not complete and that was in biking improvements adjacent to Evanston Township High School, Church Street and Mason Park. Sat Nagar, the city engineer is here, has presentation. Presentation's also available online. There's a map in particular that the council was keen to see. And so we'll be showing that to you, but you can also pull it up online. Sat, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. City Manager, Mr. Bob Kovich. City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, Mr. here. Sat Nagar, city engineer. We are here to complete the discussion of the proposed biking improvements on ETHS and Church Street, as well as the Mason Park. We have a brief presentation. We can go through that and I'll be able to answer any questions. The Church Street ETHS bike path is the section between Dodge and Pitner. Most of this off-street bike path will be on the school right-of-way, ETHS right-of-way. Since we met last time on September 29th, we had a pretty much a field meeting with the administrative staff and we did walk the section of ETHS property and came back with an alignment which would work both for the city as well as for the school. As a part of this, let me go back, yeah. This is the... Yes. So we are starting at Dodge. And this is the section all the way to Pitner. So in this section between Dodge and smaller section, we want an off-street bike path away from the street. And the section, as you can see, we are identifying three different sections. One is the on-street bike path, off-street bike path, and off-street, you know, multi-use path. The section, we are going to have the section between Dodge and Pitner. It's a combination of the off-street bike path and the off-street multi-use path. There is an existing sidewalk in this, in the section. There's an existing sidewalk in the section, pretty much between Pitner and Dodge for a major length. So we'll convert that to a multi-use path and just go ahead and construct an off-street bike path west of Dodge. There are several trees. There are several trees and in discussion with the school. The school feels that some of those trees have to come down because of the condition. And we did have the city arborist, Mr. D'Agostino, did a review of the tree, review of those trees. And he did indicate that several trees has to come down, has to be taken down because of the condition of the trees. And this is the only section where there will be tree impacts. And the section between where we are showing the multi-use path, we will not be impacting any trees. The next section is a little bit more complex. This is a section between Pitner and McCormick to connect with the existing path. We are proposing an on-street median separated two-way bike lane on the south side. The reason for the median is we have Dodge, which is two-way with traffic. So the section of the bike path has to be separated from the travel lane. So we are recommending a median. And as a part of the bike path, we are recommending the stop signs at McDaniel, Fowler, and Pitner, just to make sure that the pedestrians can cross and in order to eliminate any conflicts. Also, as a part of this project, we are recommending, we will be recommending pretty much pedestrian crossing at McDaniel. In this section between Pitner and all the way up to McDaniel, there will be parking impacts. Existing parking on the south side has to be removed in order to accommodate this bike path. This section is, I have not seen any of the IDAT streets. This is being built. So we had to go with, we need to talk to IDAT, have a coordination and develop some of the plans and get their approval.
Excuse me, Alderman Brathwaite has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sat, are you going to show us a chart or a... A map of where those impacts are going to be along Pitner?
The section, pretty much between Pitner and McDaniel, there are about 24 parking spaces on the south side. Those 24 parking spaces will be impacted because of the bike path. Based on the length of the block, there are two blocks between McDaniel and Fowler and Fowler to Pitner.
On the...
South side.
No, no. Pitner runs east and north and south.
I'm talking about the Church Street.
Okay, I thought you said on Pitner. Go back a slide. Parking impacts, okay. So just on Church Street, nothing on Pitner?
Yes, just on Church Street. Nothing on the side street. No, nothing on the north-south street, just on the...
When you say impacts, does that mean we're losing...
We'll be losing the parking, yes.
24 spaces?
Yes.
Impacts is a nice way to say it. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nagar. The city school committee met last week and Mr. Nagar brought some of this information, the proposal. They're talking to the safety personnel from ETHS that they think this is a really important thing for all the students getting to ETHS. The ones who are coming from east or west of McCormick, those who are taking the bike path through the arboretum to get to school. The students are also riding south on Gray and Brown to get to ETHS, that we need better connections altogether for all the students who are filling the bike corral with their bikes at ETHS. So this is a critical connector. Skokie is also building and extending their bike path eastward to McCormick along Church Street. And we're looking to make that connection as well. And this is a key component.
Alderman Holmes?
The north side of there is a fifth ward. And there is parking on the north side of Church as well. And also, when you get to McDaniel, south of Church, there's parking on both the nor, I mean, the west and the east side. And the same thing is on Fowler. There's, so there is off-street parking that should accommodate for those 24 spaces. I think.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Nagar, is there room on the bridge over the canal to accommodate a two-way cycle track? Is there enough lane width?
We need to work on those details. And how we go back to the, you know, connect with the sidewalk. We need to work on those details. As I mentioned, that when, once we reach near the bridge, we may have to make sure that there is enough room and we can either go on the bridge or on the sidewalk. We need to work on some of the details with IDAT as well.
Thank you.
And you know what, there's another, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's another possibility, and this is another year down the line, but the North Shore School that's there on the northwest corner will be closing because they're moving out into Skokie. And we're going to have to talk to the Metropolitan Center or District because we don't know what's going to happen with there. And there's lots of parking there as well that might be able, that we might be able to work with as well. Because they will, I think Shore School will move next, I want to say next June or July.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Yeah, it's coming up. Mm-hmm. So that's another option for parking. We have no idea what they're going to do with the space. That's one of the things that we need to meet with Deborah Shore about to find out what's going to happen.
Wish you Mayweather soon.
I think so too.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. On Church Street, between Bridge and, between the Bridge or the Channel and Pitner, there are four lanes. Just in that section, I, we do not see a need to have four lanes. So reducing that to two lanes and having a bike path would make more sense. And it would probably increase the safety of the pedestrians crossing the Church Street. That would be pretty much a traffic calming effect now. People are trying to, you know, overtaking speed in that section. So this would increase the safety and pretty much accommodate the bike lanes as well. And just to let you know that even though I did mention there is room for 24 parking spaces, still we will do a parking survey to make sure who is parking there and how much it is being used. We'll go through the whole process before coming up with the real impacts. That's why I left it as impacts and...
That's okay.
Real numbers, just to... Real numbers, just to...
Thank you very much.
The next steps is, we have planned a public meeting on November 6th at the Erie Health Center and in which we'll be talking about the Dodge Avenue as well as the Church Street and the Mason Park, all the three projects, and we'll be able to answer any questions from the residents and we'll, you know, as I mentioned, that we'll have a detailed exhibits, the same exhibits, we're going to make presentations and solicit input from the residents as well. And if the, with the council approval, then we can start working with ETHS and IDAT on the design. And so when we go to the transportation, the parking committee, then we will come up with the real impacts and the parking and then, of course, the city council approval before we go with constructing the project. There are several steps in which we will be coming back with the impacts and what is the progress so far and giving an update to the council.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, this is the first time I've seen that date, so I'm looking at my calendar first before I make my comment. And then the second question is, how are you informing residents about that meeting on the 6th?
We did advertise this in the paper and it will be on the website, the city website regarding the meeting next week.
And what time is it?
We have a flyer.
The time?
Meeting is 7:00.
Do you have flyers?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is a, a good point. We did mention this at the fifth ward meeting about the, about the public meeting as well, so we will, it's going to be on the website as well. So that's why I'm letting you know that it's November 6th, it is next week and from 7:00 to 9:00, we'll make all the presentations and we will want to get some input from the residents as well.
Well, is it possible just to get some half-fliers so I can figure out a way to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, moving on to the Mason Street bike path. Yeah, let me make sure I use that pointer right. As of, now, the Davis Street is a bike route, so all we are trying to do is, go back, we are, we want to complete the missing connection between Davis and Church. Basically, west of Mason Park, between Mason Park and Dodge, we have two-way bike lane on Church and then Davis is a bike route. So we need to somehow get the bikers going westbound on Davis to go to Church so that they can continue on Church to Dodge and all the way up to the McCormick path. So as a part of this, we want to, let me go, now, if you look at the... I need to get a new pointer, okay, here you go. Yeah, this is the Davis Street. All we are suggesting is there will be no changes to the Davis Street. We will have pretty much have an access, access ramp at Davis and there is an existing sidewalk within the Mason Park. So we want to use part of this existing walk because it is straight path, want to use a part of this as a bike path and then construct a new path to the west of the existing paths to connect with the bike path on Church. We are also suggesting that we should have a separate pedestrian walk in case if the bikers, more bikers start using this section to separate the pedestrians from the bike for at least half of this length. So as you can see that this, this section would be the proposed pedestrian walk and this would be the existing bike path and we will connect with the bike path on Church That's all the changes, just to let you, now, there will be no impact to the existing trees or any of the existing infrastructure within the Mason Park. As I mentioned, only the south portion of the sidewalk in the Mason Park will be impacted. The reason we do not want to widen the existing path is there is tennis courts as well as the, you have the, pretty much the basketball courts and so we don't want to make any changes to the existing, so within the existing path, we are trying to connect and keep the impacts to the minimum. So again, with the same steps, we'll be discussing the Mason Park improvements at the meeting on November 6th and then coming, going through the same process of going to the transportation and coming back to the city council. And if the approval of the city council would like to construct this next year because it's going to be pretty simple construction with the minimum impacts to the park and anything, any other infrastructure in the park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone's asked all their questions, okay. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting, October 13, and approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 20. Tonight, the administration and public works committee met and asked your approval of payroll through October 5, $2,641,880.71. The bill's through the 28th of October, $2,183,663.39. A3-1, we request that you authorize the manager to execute a five-year single-source service and maintenance agreement with this and Crop Elevator Corporation for the elevators at Sherman Plaza Parking Garage at a cost of $34,436.16 for the period April 1, 2014 to March 31, 2019. This involves a reduction of $4,747 for the first year and a 12% discrete decrease when compared to last year's agreement. There will possibly be annual increases in years 2 through 5. Next, we have A3.2 and we're requesting you authorize the manager to execute a contract for consulting services for the study and creation of a special service area, SSA, for the business districts along Chicago Avenue and the intersections of Main and Dempster Street inclusive of the Chicago-Main and Dempster-Chicago merchant districts with place consulting for a total amount of $36,983.78. We ask your approval to introduce Ordinance 125-014, amending the code of 2012 to increase the number of authorized Class C-1 liquor licenses from 6 to 7. A5 is being held in committee and will be addressed by the committee chair. A6 is an ordinance which amends the city code of 2012, subsection 346 parentheses O, as amended to increase the number of authorized Class O liquor licenses from 0 to 1. This is for introduction and the committee agreed to allow for the suspension of the rules and will be addressed by the committee chair. A7, we ask your approval to adopt Ordinance 114-014, which permits the sale of beer in 22-ounce containers for off-site consumption for the current Class P2 liquor license. Your approval is requested for the adoption of Ordinance 122-014 to dissolve the Southwest Tax Increment Finance District effective December 31, 2014. The Planning and Development Committee also met this evening and requests approval for introduction for granting a special use for a Type 2 restaurant, 800 Degrees Neapolitan Pizzeria at 812 Church Street. Your approval is also requested for introduction and suspension of the rules for Ordinance 130-014, granting a special use to permit a Type 2 restaurant, Beth's Little Bake Shop in the B1A Business District in the Central Street Overlay District. Next is P3, which is, we request that you...
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Is that off the consent agenda?
Yes, well, I'm going to ask that it be.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going to ask that the rule be suspended. Is that what you want or do you want me to take it off?
Well, I wanted to ask Alderman Grover, did you want P2 off the agenda for suspension of the rules?
Yes, I think it was, I think it just happened.
Okay.
I did.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
So now, let's talk about P3.
Yep.
P3, I'm asking for introduction and your approval to suspend the rules for the adoption of Ordinance 131-014, granting a special use permit for a Type 2 restaurant, Patisserie Coralie in the D2 Downtown Retail Core District. P4 is, is, P4, I'm distracted.
Who are moving to introduce them all?
No, I'm moving now for action on P4.
Okay.
Which is amending Title 4, Chapter 14 of the city code from Site Plan and Appearance Review, SPARC, to Design and Project Review, DAPR. Adoption of this ordinance will institute a revised staff design and project review process. Staff has identified several revisions that are noted in the attached ordinance that will change this review process and lead to improved recommendations. Ordinance 119-014 grants a special use for a restaurant Type 2 at 1613 Sherman Avenue. This is Doc Popcorn in the D2 Downtown Retail Core District. P6, we ask that you approve adoption of Ordinance 110-014 to allow daycare center child and daycare center adult as a special use in C1 and C2 commercial districts under human services. Ordinance 111-014 amends the city code to increase the age of, the age of sale, purchase of tobacco or liquid nicotine product products from 18 to 21 years of age. Madam Mayor, there are no recommendations for committees or boards and therefore I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Bratway? Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through administration and public works?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. A5, Ordinance 126-0-14, increasing the number of Class F liquor license for Highland Park CVS doing business, LLC doing business as CVS Promacy at number 8760 at 3333 Central Street. The, I would, the committee discussed this and would hold it in committee until there is a meeting held with the CVS representatives and our city staff and I guess the Alderman.
All right.
So it's been held in committee. A6 is Ordinance 127-0-14, increasing the number of Class O liquor license in Ford Dell Foods doing business at Shell Gas Station at 2494 Oakton Street. We would move approval and also suspension of the rules for tonight.
All right. You moved, oh, excuse me. We have a motion and a second to move to, first to suspend the rules.
Suspend, I think she suspended the rules during the call.
You did, perfect. All right, so it's been moved to...
Accept it.
Accept Ordinance 127-014.
Yes.
Increasing the number of Class O liquor licenses for Dell Foods at 2494 Oakton Street. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Bratway? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Holmes?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Alderman Tindham? Alderman Grover? Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to one.
The motion passes. Alderman Holmes, does that complete your report?
That completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Excellent. Alderman Fisk? Do we have planning and development, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P2, Ordinance 130-014, granting a special use for a restaurant Type 2 at 1814 Central Street, Beth's Little Bake Shop. It was on the consented agenda for introduction. I move suspension of the rules. Oh, did we do, okay, then I, I move adoption.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 130-014. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Bratway? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to one.
The motion passes.
That's the end of PND.
Don't you have?
Oh, P3.
P3?
I thought we did all of P3. Alderman Rainey, did we do all of P3?
You've got to...
Okay, then I move adoption of Ordinance 131-014, granting a special use for a restaurant Type 2, Patisserie Coralie at 600 Davis Street.
Been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 131-014. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Bratway? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to one.
The motion passes. Excellent work, everyone. We are at call of the wards. Alderman Burrus?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make two referrals to Planning and Development Committee. First, that, that the review of the plan development process include reports from the IEPA for testing on Phase 1 and 2 testing on all plan developments in Evanston. The second referral is for a study for outdoor light ordinance. This is something that is, that we lack and that is a energy efficiency that has been recognized as a need in the city of Evanston from our star communities. I think on the report from the, from our award from the star communities in March, we were still lacking a light, a light ordinance that would give us some control over not only energy efficiency but security and the effect of lights on, from one property to another. So that is a referral to PND.
Thank you.
If I can just say, Boulder, Colorado has a really good ordinance in effect. If we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to send a word of condolences to the family of Ms. Dooley. She passed several weeks ago and unfortunately I was out of town for a funeral, but just for her many contributions to the second ward, I just wanted to share that. And as well, I just want to quickly thank the staff at ETHS. This morning, I had an opportunity to participate in their parent shadow day and it was very well organized. A lot of parents were out and typically when you go to these things, you always just see the same old faces, but I think it was very, very well organized and a very diverse crowd, so I just want to acknowledge all the wonderful staff and my kids for allowing me to go into their classrooms today. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that yesterday I attended the Foster Senior Club Fashion Show and I just want to tell you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, please put next October on your calendar. You're in for a treat. I mean, to be there and especially to see the Golden Ladies who are all over 90 and...
They strut.
They strut. They actually got up on the catwalk and walked. And one, Ms. Kelly, who is 92 or 3, was escorted by her brother who was 101. I mean, it was absolutely amazing. So next year, I hope you will put it on your calendar. It's just really, it's, it's a wonderful way to spend, it's a long afternoon, but it's a wonderful way to spend an afternoon. Thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you. Not quite as exciting as that, but I do have a ward meeting coming up for the sixth ward on Thursday, 7:00 PM at... on Thursday, 7:00 P.M. at 3:00 Crowns. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
I just want to take a moment to thank the Evanston Bike Club for all of their great support and insight on our bike initiatives, from the bike infrastructure to bike education. They're, I think, going to be a really great partner with us in all these things. So, thank you very much, Evanston Bike Club.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reach out to C V S and tell them how excited I am about meeting with them in the next week and resolving all the issues surrounding Esberry and Oakton and their C V S store on Central Street.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
What is it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Well, it wasn't quite as fast as Alderman Fisk, but it was pretty good.